Good evening. This is a call to order for the April 8, 2024 City Canal and Chester Planning and Zoning Meeting. Mr. Deeds, roll call, please.
Mr. Wohlenthaler.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Gooden.
Here.
Mr. Deeds.
Here.
Mr. Pausgrove.
Here.
Motion to excuse Mr. Ritchie and Ms. McDonald.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Deeds. Mr. Pausgrove, second by Ms. Gooden. Roll call.
Mr. Wohlenthaler.
I'm sorry, time in, 7:00 PM.
All right, Mr. Wohlenthaler.
Yes.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. Mr. Pausgrove.
Yes.
Now I'll need approval of our minutes from March.
Mr. Chairman, I move minutes being approved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Wohlenthaler, second by Mr. Pausgrove. Roll call.
Mr. Wohlenthaler.
Yes.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. Mr. Pausgrove.
Yes.
Now it's time for public comment for items that are not on our agenda this evening. So if you're here to speak to us about an item that is not on the agenda, now is the time. Okay. If you will be speaking with us this evening, we'd ask that you stand and take an oath. So if there's any chance that you'll speak to the commission this evening, could you please stand and take an oath? Do you swear to be truthful in the testimony you give and tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. I will also say that there are five of us here this evening, so city statute requires four positive votes for a application to pass. So if the vote is three to two, the application or the motion would not carry. So there needs to be four positive votes for these applications to pass this evening. I'll turn it over to staff for our first application.
The first application on tonight's agenda is Conditional Use 24-002. The location is 56 through 58 East Waterloo Street. The request this evening is a conditional use to allow for a dog grooming facility on the subject property. This parcel consists of a quarter acre on the north side of East Waterloo. This building is two commercial tenant spaces on the first floor with a residential apartment on the second floor. Properties to the east and west are commercial buildings in the same zoning district. Property to the north is a 2.39 acre vacant parcel, zoned Old Town multifamily, and then the property to the south is City Hall. This is a photograph of the subject property, just to get the commission familiar. The applicant is requesting to open a dog grooming business on the entire first floor. The plans indicate that there will be two employees on site with hours varying Tuesday through Saturday, no later than 5:30 PM. They will utilize an online booking system that will have an average of 90 minutes for a full grooming service. The site is noted to have a maximum of two created areas for dogs during scheduled hours, and the plans note the pet relief area location behind the building within the confines of the fenced-in area. A freestanding sanitary station is also being provided. Looking at the contents from the application here, covered most of these, but looking at their kind of site plan, this is a screenshot from the Frank County Otters website for kind of the room layout to kind of give you guys an idea of what they're looking at here. This is the front porch, the rear porch. Looking at their site plan here, you can see they have an entrance that they've indicated would be the primary entrance on the back. There's also the waiting room entrance that's on the front porch. The site plan shows the two sanitation stations, the holding crates is in the grooming area, as well as the bath area that's kind of off to the back. Again, the applicant does provide some information here on hours, employees, the typical services they're offering, as well as, again, noting that they're going to be on the entire first floor. When looking at some of the other information provided, they are clearly indicating they are not a dog boarding or kenneling service. It's strictly for grooming only, and that the kennels that are being provided are for the animals that are being serviced. No animals will be kept after hours. A commercial kennel is prohibited in the zoning district while the grooming is prohibited, so that's why that distinction is being made. Part of the site plan here, they are showing there's some existing fencing in this corner of the property. The pet relief area is within the fenced-in portion behind the parking lot. Looking at more information from the applicant that they have provided during the wait times because of the short window, it will promote local shopping. People go into coffee shops, visiting some of the stores that are in the area. They also note that the Nom 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 Doggy Treat Bakery right down the street, another similar use. They also do note that their future plans for the community would be some grant funding, opportunities, senior citizen days, sponsoring local events, and then doing an apprentice program for future dog groomers to try to help create some job opportunities for the community as well. With the statement of relationship to adjacent land use, parking, and noise, the applicant does note they have a parking lot to the rear of the facility, as well as on-street parking in front, again, noting that the pet drop-off will typically be from the back if you're driving to the facility, just the way the site's oriented. However, they do have that front entrance. The hours of operations, again, are no later than 5:30 PM, starting times at, backing up here, starting times at 8:00 AM at the earliest on Saturdays, 9:30 Tuesday through Friday. So they note that those times are taken into account with the fact that dogs do bark, that they want to be good neighbors to the area. They also do note the pet relief area, again, talking about they'll have a separate sanitation station that will be cleaned up daily. Photograph is provided of kind of the area for the pet relief and then also the sanitation station, just to help familiarize the commission, and then provide some information for their submittal. Staff reviewed the conditional use request, found it to be compatible with the property, adjacent land use, and plans for the area. Again, the applicant does note this being something that's compatible with it encouraging other retail trips within the area, which is always encouraged. For traffic flow and parking, they have the off-site parking lot. This site will be primarily for those quicker trips with the 60 to 90-minute services, so the off-street parking lot is an advantage in this instance. The proposed animal grooming service will not adversely affect the public health, safety, comfort, prosperity, and general welfare. Again, the quick service times, and the applicant has also indicated the social programming they want to be involved in with the business as it matures. That's something that is a positive for the community. So staff is recommending the conditional use for the dog grooming business be approved as presented.
Any questions for staff? Is the applicant present? Is there anything you wish to add? If you could, please sign in as well.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Sproul. I just want to thank the council for this opportunity to present our little business. We are very excited to be part of the community, and we look forward to doing business here. Thank you.
Any questions?
Are you an existing grooming business or starting from scratch?
So Haley, my head groomer right here, has nine years of experience in grooming.
Is there a tenant at the top of that building?
There is.
Is it a residential unit?
It is.
Okay. And obviously, they're aware of the conditional use application that's...
I would imagine so, yes.
Okay.
And prior to this, it was Impact Nutrition.
Right.
Which probably had a lot more traffic than we will have.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is a conditional use request. I will now open it up for a public hearing. If there's anybody here from the public to speak on this application?
See, no rush to the microphone. I think we've closed public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Wohlenthaler, second by Mr. Pausgrove. Roll call.
Mr. Wohlenthaler.
Yes.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. Mr. Pausgrove.
Yes.
Need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll certainly make a motion to approve Conditional Use 24-002.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Deeds, second by Ms. Gooden. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Wohlenthaler.
Yes.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. Mr. Pausgrove.
Yes.
Conditional use is approved.
Good luck.
The next application on tonight's agenda, Site Development Plan 24-002. The applicant, Skelton Development USA, is requesting for an expansion on their existing facility at 633 Rutherford Drive. The expansion would be for new, for 6,000 additional square feet to the rear of the existing building. This subject parcel is in the Canal Point Industry and Commerce Park. The existing building's a little over 10,000 square feet with an office warehouse for Skelton Truck Lines, a Canadian trucking company. The property and surrounding properties within the industrial park are zoned women-of-manufacturing. The property to the west is 89 acres of undeveloped farmland that's in Violet Township. The applicant is requesting approval to construct a new 6,000-square-foot addition for the rear warehouse space for Skelton Truck Lines. The additions to add two additional overhead garage doors on that side of the building. Looking at the site plan, all setbacks are being met. Again, the addition, I apologize, the next screen should be a little easier, is right off of the rear of the building. The site currently has 12 parking stalls in the front with an additional 18 beyond the gated portion of the lot in the northeast corner. The applicant is showing six additional parking stalls behind the addition. With the plans, the applicant is reaching a threshold inside of the building that they have to use fire suppression. So the plans do show a new fire line is being connected to the public main with the new remote fire department connection facing the street. Violet Township reviewed the proposed FTC location, doesn't have any issues with it. We met with the Cedar Land Use Committee last Monday, and they approved the plans as presented, including the utilities. Looking at the landscape plan, the existing site has 22 trees. The applicant's proposing to plant additional six at the front end of the building. The urban forester is part-time now, so he'll review the tree placement and species during tech review, but the quality does meet our zoning regs. When looking at the lighting plan, the applicant that did this addition drawing was the original submittal, so they have a full photometric plan sheet from the original set of plans. So they added the new wall packs that are being added. These two wall packs are being added onto the building, just to show the light levels that will be increasing with the proposed project. Everything behind the building and around, behind the gated area, is all pavement for employee parking and also semi-truck parking, so the additional lighting in this case is warranted. On the screen, the area that's not grayed out shows the building addition. Looking at the building addition here, it is a similar metal wall panel with a synthetic stone water table and a standing C metal roof, colors to match. The applicant has provided details for the garage doors to show they will match the existing on the building as well. So staff is recommending the site development plan for the new 6,000-square-foot addition be approved as presented.
Any questions for staff?
How much additional space do they have for expansion?
So this addition was planned from the beginning of the project. If you look at how the storm utilities cross right here, these manholes and catch bases were set for this addition, so this is maximizing the site without any major overhaul.
And with the addition, we're still good on parking and et cetera?
Yeah, they are over the minimum of what they need.
Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant present?
Hello, I'm Jennifer O'Tripplett with OHM Advisors. Thank you for hearing us today. I'm really just here to answer questions.
Any questions for...
I'm out in the industrial park every day, and they're a great, great neighbor, so no complaints with what they've been doing.
Yeah, I've been on that economic tour for the last two years, and that's one of the cleanest front terminals I've ever seen.
Right.
They're busy, too.
Yes, they are.
All right, thank you. So, let's see, just need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve SDP 24-002 as approved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Wohlenthaler, second by Mr. Pausgrove. Roll call.
Mr. Wohlenthaler.
Yes.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. And Mr. Pausgrove.
Yes.
Site development plan is approved.
The last application on tonight's agenda is Zoning Map Amendment ZM 24-001. Address is 485 West Waterloo Street. The request this evening is to rezone the subject property from neighborhood commercial to low-density residential. This property consists of roughly one acre located on the south side of West Waterloo Street. It is a single-family dwelling in detached barn. The, to the east of the property is the SnoCo Gas Station, similarly zoned neighborhood commercial. To the west and south is the Charleston Lake Condominium Community, zoned multifamily. To the north is the Heavenly Treats Bakery, zoned neighborhood commercial, and then a residential home just to the right of Heavenly Treats is adjacent to this parcel. That is zoned planned commercial district. Again, the request this evening is to rezone this parcel to low-density residential or an R3 zoning district. This existing residential home has been legal non-conforming since 2010. What that means is in 2010, the former property owner rezoned it from R3 to neighborhood commercial with the development within the area. During that time, that resident noted that the R3 zoning district was no longer practical with the commercial businesses that are growing within the area, and the plans specifically for what was across the street, that that was approved just before 2010, for that to be a higher kind of dense, commercial, mixed-use project. However, this property has been used strictly as a residential home since its construction in 1933. With it being used as residential currently, it is legal non-conforming. Legal non-conforming status may be continued. However, if it's discontinued for more than six months or destroyed for more than half its fair value, it can't be reestablished. So that being the case, the property would have to develop into something commercial as it currently stands. Further, the applicant is seeking this rezoning not just to continue the conformity of the property, but what has triggered is they wanted to do an addition onto the home, and they can't legally expand the non-conforming status without the rezoning to bring it back to residential. Still, looking at the photo on the screen here, just a photo, kind of skipping through the front yard, showing the front of the home. This residential home does have a detached, larger detached barn behind the property. There was a detached garage at one point in time that has been added onto this home. This property owner bought the property less than a year and a half ago, so they have been doing investments to it since they purchased it. That has been noted in their application. One of the bigger ones is this property was on well water, and they have tapped into the domestic water service last year, so they have put that investment into the property, switching over from well to city water. When looking at the rezoning request, it's compatible for the proposed land use, adjacent zoning, and appropriate plans for the area. The proposed rezoning to low-density residential would be appropriate based on the character of the property and its continued use as a single-family dwelling. The comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2023 notes this parcel and those immediately adjacent to it as being a mixed-use neighborhood zoning district. This rezoning would continue that theme for a mixed-use neighborhood by permitting the continued use of this large lot residential home and promote further commercial development appropriately to scale around it. That was one thing important with this zoning district and the future land use map, is these colors don't represent the same zoning categories. So I wanted to have the legend here on the end. This is a zoning district that has not been created yet in our zoning code, but is likely to be created when we do a zoning code update. When looking at the relationship proposed amendment to access traffic utilities, this proposed zoning amendment would not change or adversely affect traffic and plans for the existing thoroughfare plan. When looking at the survey here, it shows that the property had a looped driveway. Since the purchase of the property, the applicant has closed this arm of the looped driveway off, has fenced in that portion of the yard, so they are only using the access drive to the east, which is making the property, even as a residential home, have less access drives onto the street, lessening the traffic impact, making it more predictable. The applicant, again, has connected to the public domestic water service in the summer of 2023. It is still currently on the private septic system at this time. For the relationship to the proposed amendment for public health, convenience, comfort, prosperity, and general welfare, the proposed zoning amendment would permit the property owner to continue to invest in the subject property. The applicant has already performed some cosmetic and maintenance upgrades to the home and the property, noted the domestic water service. They also put in the fence around the property that wasn't there before, and they've also done some interior upgrades, again, just trying to bring this property back to life, this 100-year-old property. The applicant, again, submitted plans with this application that shows they want to do a addition onto the home. The addition plans, again, is what has triggered this rezoning request. Talking with the applicants before filing, this is one addition of two that they'd like to do. The future, if feasible, would be a first-floor master suite. Currently, the bedrooms are all located upstairs. Again, the current zoning prohibits them doing these projects. For the relationship to the services, the general expansion plans and planned capital improvements, this existing legal non-conforming use doesn't affect the adequacy of available services or capital improvements, so zoning it down to residential has less of an impact than its current zoning. So staff is recommending that the request to rezone the property to low-density residential be approved as presented.
Any questions for staff?
I believe, I recall when it was zoned to neighborhood commercial. Was it R3 before?
It was R3 before.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, it was zoned to R3 from 2002, and the R3 zoning was kind of widely established in the city to 2010. I believe prior to 2002, it was a single-family zoning district as well. I'm just not sure which category.
Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant present? Anything you guys wish to add?
Just thank you for hearing us out on our proposal.
Any questions?
These are neighbors of mine, and I can attest to all the improvements they've made so far.
Yeah, I almost wondered when it was originally zoned neighborhood commercial with the intent of it evolving into something else at some point. So I, yes, this is an investment back in residential, right? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. So I will open it up for a public hearing. So anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this application, now's the chance.
I move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Wohlenthaler, second by Mr. Pausgrove to close the public hearing. Roll call.
Mr. Wohlenthaler.
Yes.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. Mr. Pausgrove.
Yes.
And Mr. Moore, this would be a recommendation to council since it's a zoning map change?
That's correct.
Okay. So on the motion, we'll just need a recommendation to city council.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that, or I move that we recommend to council to rezone the subject property from neighborhood commercial to low-density residential R3.
Second.
So the motion on the floor, made by Ms. Gooden, second by Mr. Wohlenthaler, is in reference to ZM-24-001. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Wohlenthaler.
Yes.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. Mr. Pausgrove.
Yes.
So ZM 24-001 is approved and recommended to city council for adoption.
In terms of old and new business, last week, the adjacent property to the Columbus Metropolitan Library site, they had filed a stay order with Franklin County, seeking for that project to cease all further engineering and building permit plan review. That has not been acted upon by a judge at the county yet. If it does, we will no longer be able to review the documents they submit until that has been ruled upon. But currently, right now, we are reviewing civil engineering, and they've submitted some building permit drawings to keep things moving further along.
Haven't they started clearing?
Yes, so they submitted a tree removal permit before the end of last month. It was granted on the 28th, I believe, and they got the trees cleared on the 29th or 30th.
So what's the order for?
The order, so they have filed, they have appealed my determination that it's a conditional use, planning and zoning's determination that it's a conditional use, and city council's determination that it's a condition use category to Franklin County. Once, and then they followed that up with a request to cease all further progress in the project until Franklin County had a chance to review and determine the status.
Any guesses how long it'll take Franklin County?
Our law director said they have current projects being appealed to Franklin County now in other jurisdictions that have been in the pipeline for 18 months.
But this doesn't prohibit them from moving forward until that's acted upon?
Correct. Yeah, until Franklin County acts upon the stay notice, they can continue to move forward after this.
Got it, got it.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't really have a whole lot. Sorry for the heat here today. I tried to get it looked at for the meeting. That thermostat on that wall was set to 99 when I walked in the room. The heat's still on. I don't know what's going on, but hopefully it's fixed before the next meeting.
Any update on Del Taco?
Yeah, they have their civil engineering fully approved. They've submitted building permits. We are just waiting on the owners to schedule a pre-construction meeting so they can break ground, but that one seemingly is moving forward.
Did we have any type of reaction from Home Depot in the last meeting?
They did not show up to the next court hearing. I'm not sure if they showed up to the court hearing last Thursday. I was out of the office. But they are still in that process to get the site cleaned up. I will check in. I'll be back with you. How about BPs? We kind of turned down their proposal. Have they decided to...
Have they decided to do anything?
So BP's not moving forward at this time with their project, that site. However, they are looking to remove all the car washes from all of their facilities. So they are trying to contract now with one company to do all the work at all the sites. So for the meantime, they've boarded up the car wash for this facility, because they've had issues where people were trying to still use it, so they've permanently closed them.
And the city staff will continue to watch, you know, that project or that property with the boarded up?
Yes. Yeah, I talked with somebody at BP, and they said they are in the process of trying to find a demolition crew to do all that site restoration.
You told us last month that the mayor was going to talk to Hartman's. Any update there on cars that are parked everywhere?
I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm not sure if he has or not.
I did notice the sidewalk was cleared this past weekend, or at least I got back into town yesterday, early afternoon, and I did notice there was a significant...
It was pretty much all week.
...decrease, but there's still cars parked on the street and all around the property. So I would, yeah.
I went by this afternoon about 4:00, and then there were cars on the sidewalk, and then they were gone when I came by to this meeting. So there may be cars moving in and out.
So maybe progress. Okay.
Yeah, definitely reach out, you know, if you don't see anything, because I know right now he's being bamboozled with lots of things going on, like the flooding last week was a huge topic right now. So he's being hit from a whole bunch of angles, so...
He's the mayor.
Yes, so a gentle reminder, I'm sure he'll appreciate, you know. He's just, it's a learning curve, being mayor for the first time, so.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by the chair, second by Mr. Deeds, I'm sorry, made by Mr. Pauls Grove, second by Mr. Deeds. Rule call.
Mr. Wylentholler?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Pauls Grove?
Yes.